Good morning. I call to order the meeting of the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees. We appreciate your interest in Alabama Community College System and we welcome you here. I want to especially thank Dr. Kathy Murphy and her staff and the Gaston State Community College family. We appreciate the hospitality you've shown us has been fantastic. The bar continues to be raised and be a little higher, so your fellow presidents are probably a little bit anxious, I think, when we come to their place, but thank you very much. A great deal of work and preparation has gone into the development of documentation for this meeting. Chancellor Baker, thank you and your staff for your preparation. All the college presidents, we thank you too for helping us prepare for this meeting. As always, we remain laser focused on student success and remain true to the core mission of education, workforce development, and academic transfer. Our invocation today will be by Pastor Mark Gidley, who joined us last night. Pastor Gidley currently serves as the pastor of Faith Worship Center located Glencoe. Pastor Gidley resides in Hoakesbluff and is a lifelong resident of Etowah County. He is graduate of Hoakesbluff High School and holds a master's degree from the Pentecostal Theological Seminary in Cleveland, Tennessee. Pastor Gidley spent 21 years in the insurance industry in both sales and management, winning numerous sales award and twice named Life Underwriter of the Year. He serves as Alabama State Representative for District 29, which covers areas in both Etowah and Calhoun Counties. Pastor Gidley, thank you.
What we see here today, I think, is absolutely beyond our words to describe. As I was talking to Chancellor Baker for a moment last night, workforce development, we know, is going to be the driving force going forward in industrial development. What we've seen here, what we're seeing and experiencing here today is a part of that. I'm extremely excited about that. Thank you Chancellor Baker, leading the charge. Dr. Murphy, for setting the stage. Dean Allen Smith, for getting on the train and driving it with great force. And with that vision and leadership of those and many others, we're here today with something that I believe is going to impact our generation, this state, and especially this region, in ways that at this moment, we may not even be able to understand. It's a great day. Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, first of all, we thank you for the opportunity to serve our community. We thank you, God, for the opportunity to reach and touch young people and students, God, with opportunities, Father, for advancement in their lives. Father, your word teaches us, God, that we should lift one another up, that we should hold each other up, God, and we should support one another. Father, what we see here today, God, I believe is a great structure to support the next generation, the next group of young people, God, that will now be given opportunities, Father, for advancement in their lives, for better homes and families and lives and opportunities, God, because of the vision that has driven what we see today, God. Father, these are kingdom principles. Helping our communities grow, helping our families grow, strengthening them, God, are all principles taught in your word, and we're so thankful for that today. So, Father, we honor you today. We give you glory today. Unless the Lord builds the house, they labor in vain that build it. So, we believe, God, not only have these with great vision help build us today, but we believe your hand has also guided, directed, heaped, and oversaw the things that have happened here today, because your will is for your people to be blessed, and we honor you today. Father God, as these proceedings and this board meeting go forth, we pray for your presence. We pray, we beseech you, for without you, we can do nothing. Without you, Lord, we can't go out and come in. Your grace, your strength, your power, your ability is necessary for all we do. And remind us, God, that while we serve one another, our greatest service is to you, to help one another, to encourage one another, to stand alongside of one another, Father. So, Lord, we beseech your help today. We praise you with this great opportunity and privilege. We give all glory to you, for we ask you in the name of every name, the magnificent name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor Gidley. Please stand for our Pledge of Allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, individual for liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, would you please come over?
President.
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 Thank you. Our next item is approval of our agenda, and our agenda was distributed in advance to our board members for their review. I will now entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Same move.
Mr. Sheil, motions. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Houston. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approval signify by raising your hand or voice vote. Any opposed? Motion passes. Now have the approval of our minutes from our May 8 meeting. And again, these minutes were distributed in advance to our board members for their review. I will now entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Same move.
Mr. Sheil, motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconds. Tim. All those in favor. Are any discussions? All those in favor signify by voice vote or raising your hand. Motion passes. Anyone signed up to public comment? Nobody? Now have our college spotlight and Gaston State Community College, Dr. Kathy Murphy.
Good morning, Mr. Rogers, and to our Board of Trustees and Chancellor Baker. Thank you so much. It's our privilege and our honor that you have been with us. Whenever you have an opportunity to highlight your college, there's so much you want to say and share, and yet you're respectful of the board's time. And I thought about some sort of presentation where we took a deep dive into the data and show you some sort of comparative analytical data, or maybe the longitudinal data, or maybe even that predictive forecasting data. But I won't do that this morning. I will say to you that there are three things to share with you. First of all, thank you. Thank you so much for the many ways that you can continue to come to the table and support Gaston State, for that matter, to support all my friends and colleagues, our presidents. So, thank you so much for that. I certainly want to take a moment to also thank our faculty and staff here at Gaston State. Our faculty and our staff have accepted the mission. They've tolerated my pushing, and I can tell you that they have met and exceeded our expectations, not just for this event, but they continue to do it day after day after day. And so, I'm going to ask my faculty and staff, those of you with Gaston State, would you please stand? These folks have done a terrific job, and I'm so proud of them. I'd love to go around and acknowledge each of them, but Jackie Edmondson, my PR person, will not allow me to do that. She immediately starts doing cut when I start trying to acknowledge and individualize things such as that. So, thank you. I also need to thank our community. I hope that what you've been able to see during your time of visit is that we are one. We are so appreciative of our city, and by the way, we have cities, not only Gaston, but Southside, and Rainbow, and Atala, and just all of the different cities in our area center. And so, we're just so appreciative of all of the support we receive from our chambers who support us, Industrial Development Authority, our legislators, and I think one of the things that I'm most proud of is the fact that we really have come together as a community with a central focus of how do we change the lives of people for good forever. And that's been our focus about how do we change the trajectory of others. And I believe that Gaston State is playing a pivotal role. And so, first is to say thank you. The second thing that I'd like to say is, I will not show you all that data unless you would like for me to. I'll simply say this to you, Gaston State is doing well. And pick your metric, and I believe we're doing well. Whether you want to look at our enrollment, whether you want to look at retention, credit hour production, whatever areas you completers, Gaston State's doing well. So, I'll just take that one broad swipe and say, trust the data, trust us, we're focused, and Gaston State is doing well. We've created a strategic plan to give us some guidance and some direction, and we're very proud of that strategic plan. And by the way, there are two critical pieces of that strategic plan, and that is, we believe in excellence. We believe in excellence in everything that we do, and we also believe in accountability, that we are accountable to you as a board and to our chancellor. But greater than that, we're accountable to each other and to this public, and we really believe that and we walk that. We also believe that it's important that we are in the business of service, that we're people of integrity, and that our calling is that of how do we make people's lives better, and our strategic plan reflects that. And so, that's the second thing I would say to you. And the third thing is that there are people who can tell this story much better than I can, and the people who can tell the story much better than I can are our students. I'd like to invite two of our famed students to just share with you briefly how our college has changed their lives for good forever. And then after that, we just have a three-minute video where three other students just tell you how important what you do and we do has been to them and to their families. And lastly, just a quick three-minute video that just kind of summarizes and brands our college. Again, it's been our privilege and a pleasure for us to have you with us for the last couple of days, and we hope your stay continues to be positive. Again, thank you for everything you do, and may I invite our two famed students to come up and introduce themselves.
Ladies and gentlemen, how we doing today? Good. My name's Anthony Burns. My personal safety commitment is to always follow lockout tagout procedure, and I work for General Dynamics. I know it's a big day. It's a momentous occasion, and I have a very short time, so I'm going to keep it brief and respect that time. But for me, I'm sure you can gather that I'm a non-traditional student. Fresh out of high school, I did not go into college. Fresh out of high school, I went to the service. So, I served four years in the Marine Corps as an infantry Marine. After my enlistment, I transitioned back home and actually came to Gaston State and actually did the EMS programs here at Gaston State. I took my basic MT here as well, and I took my advanced here, and actually I served in EMS for several years after the fact. Actually wound up coming back to Gaston State since I had such success with it, and actually did a surgical tech program as well. Well, I started to look for a change in career, change of pace. I started to get burned out, and actually being married and having two children, that's a big decision to make. But luckily, I found fame and Ms. Carrie Wood kind of streamlined the process from the essays all the way up to the panel interviews with our industry partners. And actually having that, I was actually accepted at General Dynamics to sponsor me through the program. Actually being able to work and actually being able to make money at the same time, because I'm sure we've all been in a position where we went to work and was trying to go to college to better ourselves, and work didn't collaborate with that, because I knew you were probably going to leave after the fact. But with fame, that's really helped me. That's been a huge blessing to me and my family, and I'm extremely grateful for it. And I'll pass it on to Ms. Jenkins.
Thank you. My name is Hope Jenkins. My personal safety commitment is to always de-energize machines before working on them, and I work at Cook Foods. So, my junior year of high school, I wasn't really sure what I wanted to do, and my brother Brady was actually in this program before me, two years before me, and I had seen the benefits that Gaston State's fame program had showed him. And so, I decided to job shadow him at the job, and I got offered a job for maintenance at Cook Foods before I was even in the fame program. So, I started working about six months before I started the fame program. And so, watching my brother go through this and seeing that he had no student debt, he got to work two years' experience and have a degree and have the work experience as well, I wanted to also do what he was doing. I've always looked up to him, and I think this is a great program. I just wanted to say thank you to Gaston State for helping me choose a career path, and thank y'all for listening to my story.
Evoque Aviation is a premier boat and aircraft paint facility that caters to customers from all across the country. Our facility is capable of painting about 40 aircraft a year. We design almost 300 airplanes a year. We've currently got 170 airplanes in line to get painted, and customers are willing to wait for that quality. I'm Jonathan McCormick, proud owner of Evoque Aviation and a proud graduate of Gaston State Community College. I got my start in the automotive collision repair technology program at Gaston State. There, I learned the latest techniques and practices used in the automotive repair industry. In 2012, I opened Evoque Aviation. We now have four hangars and six paint booths in Etowah County. Because of Gaston State, I have access to other graduates from the automotive body Because of Gaston State, I have access to other graduates from the automotive body program who are experienced and very well-trained. Our skilled technicians from Gaston State make sure that every paint job is world-class. I am so proud of our team for winning the Gold Lindy, which is the grand championship trophy at the world's biggest airshow. Among eleven thousand airplanes, our design on an F-1 rocket was considered the best of the best. I credit Gaston State for giving me the technique and the training needed to be successful in this industry. Gaston State is where I earned my wings.
It's not easy navigating the ups and downs of life. Unique strength, resilience, and hope, and I found all three at Gaston State Community College. I'm Jada Pickens, an Office Administration student at Gaston State's Ares Campus in Anniston. When I was born, I wasn't breathing. My mom was scared that I wouldn't make it, but I pulled through. When I was eleven, I was diagnosed with Attention Deficit Disorder. School was never easy for me. Simple tasks came naturally to others, felt like climbing mountains to me. It led to struggles with anxiety and depression. With the support of my family, I kept going, and I was able to graduate from Oxford High School. I stayed busy juggling school and a full-time job. Life is definitely busy and demanding. Gaston State Student Support Services has been a godsend to me. The program serves students who are first generation, low income, or are disabled. They make sure we all have a real opportunity to get through school and earn our degrees. Across the whole college, there is a sense of support and encouragement. The faculty and staff realize that students come from all kinds of backgrounds. They care about us as individuals and want us to thrive in the classroom and in life. Thank you, Gaston State, for giving me the wings to fly to new, unexpected heights.
Higher education is not always set up for single fathers. Some say college isn't for those who work full-time. Others claim that if you don't go to college right after high school, you won't be successful. I'm here to prove them wrong. My name is Greg Antonio. I'm the proud father of Dion. I work full-time, and I'm a non-traditional student at Gaston State. I'm a first-generation American, born to parents from Guatemala. I graduated from Gaston City in 2009 and joined the Armed National Guard in 2010. I currently serve in an airborne unit for the Special Forces. Everywhere I've been, I've watched soldiers with degrees progress faster in their careers because having a college degree makes you more attractive to leadership. I got involved with the Veterans Upper Bound Program and started taking classes at Gaston State. I have gotten a lot of support from the VUB staff and from my instructors. Going back to college and earning my degree will be a game changer in my military career. I truly am earning my wings at Gaston State.
Evoque Aviation is a premier boat and aircraft paint facility that caters-
In a world of opportunities, there's a place where futures flourish and dreams take flight. Join us on a journey as we explore what makes Gaston State Community College special and how we change lives for good forever. We believe in our students. Our dedicated faculty and staff empower and prepare students for success through exceptional education and innovative workforce development. We go above and beyond to provide a positive, enjoyable college experience through student organizations, athletics, and on-campus events. We believe in the power of knowledge. Our students not only graduate with a college credential, but with the skills and confidence to pursue their dreams while earning a solid living wage that will change their lives for better. We believe in choices. Gaston State students can choose from a wide range of programs designed to match their passion, health science programs, career technical training, and academic courses that can seamlessly transfer to four-year universities. We also provide adult education services and skills training programs that will lead to improved employability and career advancement. We believe in the strength of connections and collaboration. Gaston State partners with global manufacturing leaders, exceptional healthcare providers, and local businesses that assist in training our students for direct entry into the workforce. We believe in flexibility. At Gaston State, we understand the demands of life. That's why we offer courses in traditional classrooms, online, and in a hybrid format. Gaston State also has five campuses that are conveniently located in Calhoun, Cherokee, and Etowah Counties. We believe in accessibility. Our programs are affordable and accessible with many financial aid and scholarship opportunities. Gaston State has one of the lowest tuitions in the state of Alabama. In fact, students can save more than thirty-two thousand dollars by choosing Gaston State over a four-year university. We believe in an educational environment that fosters innovation and creativity. Gaston State's Advanced Manufacturing and Workforce Skills Training Center is a fifty-thousand-square-foot facility that provides training in high-demand careers that result in high wages. Since 2019, Gaston State has invested millions in capital improvements across our campuses, including new building construction, renovations, and technology upgrades. At Gaston State, we believe in our students. This belief is grounded in the idea that education has the power to transform lives and shape futures. We believe that everyone deserves the opportunity to fly to new heights, to achieve their dreams through education, and to improve their lives for good forever. Join us at Gaston State Community College, where belief becomes reality. Visit us today at gastonstate.edu.
Thank you, Dr. Murphy, and thank you to your famed students and everyone who's involved. That's a great reminder of why we serve and why we're here. Thank you. We'll now move into our Section 8A, Executive Legal and Public Information. Action item A1 is Counsel Trinum State Community College Review and Approve Approval of Mission Statement. Is recommend Alabama Community College Assistant Board Trustees to approve the current mission statement of H. Counsel Trinum State Community College. Do I have a motion? Mr. Mitchell, second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Gray. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by raising your hand or voice vote. Any opposition? The motion passes. Next is item A2. Southern Union State Community College Review and Approval of Revised Mission Statement. Is recommend Alabama Community College Assistant Board Trustees approve the revised mission statement of Southern Union State Community College. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Gray, second?
Second.
Mr. Houston, any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote. Any opposition? The motion passes. Next is item A3. Bevel State Community College Review and Approval of Mission Statement. Is recommend Alabama Community College Assistant Board Trustees approve the current mission statement of Bevel State Community College. Do I have a motion? Mr. Mitchell? Mr. Mitchell, Ron Houston, second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote. Any opposition? The motion passes. Next is item A4. Trinum State Community College Approval of Agreement with Baptist Health for MLT Program. Is recommend Alabama Community College Assistant Board Trustees authorize the President of Trinum State Community College to enter into an agreement with Baptist Health to implement a medical laboratory technology program. Do I have a motion to approve? Mr. Mitchell? Second? Second, Levlin. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand or voice vote. Any opposition? Motion passes. Next is item A5. Reed State Technical College Continuation of an Increase in the Special Building Fee. Is recommend Alabama Community College Assistant Board Trustees authorize Reed State Technical College to continue the collection of the special building fee and to increase the fee from eleven dollars to fifteen dollars per credit hour. The increased fee will take effect fall semester of 2024. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Tim's motion. Mr. Mitchell, second? Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote. Any opposition? The motion passes. Next is item A6. Northwest Sholz Community College Request for Approval to Name the Walking Trail. Is recommend Alabama Community College Assistant Board Trustees authorize the President of Northwest Sholz Community College to name the Patriot Park Walking Trail as the TVA Community Credit Union Trail and to add appropriate signage. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Houston?
Second.
Second, Mr. Rome. Any discussion? All in favor signify by raising your hand or voice vote. Motion passes. Next is item A7. Gaston State Community College Request for Approval to Adjust Named Gift Opportunities. Is recommend Alabama Community College Assistant Board Trustees authorize the President of Gaston State Community College to adjust the college's naming opportunities by gift level. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved, Mr. McCartney. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Rome, any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote. Motion passes. Next is item A8. Calhoun Community College Approval of Hangar Lease with Prior Field Airport Authority. Is recommend Alabama Community College Assistant Board Trustees authorize the President of Calhoun Community College to enter into a corporate hangar rental agreement with Prior Field Airport Authority. The term of the lease is five years, and physical considerations is two thousand four hundred thirty dollars monthly rental fee or forty-five cents per square foot. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Houston? Second? Second, Mr. McCartney. All those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote. The motion carries. Item A9. Alabama Community College System Recommendation Regarding Adoption of Revised Policy 204.01, Appointment of Local Administrative Staff as Show. Is recommend Alabama Community College Assistant Board Trustees adopt the Revised Policy 204.01, Appointment of Local Administrative Staff to become effective July 1, 2024. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion, J. F. Sheil, second. Valerie? All in favor signify by raising your hand or voice vote. Motion's unanimous. Passes. Okay. Now we'll move into Section 9, A1. Calhoun Community College Associate in Applied Science of Social Work Technician. Is recommend Alabama Community College Assistant Board Trustees approve Calhoun Community College's application for an Associate in Applied Science Degree in Social Work Technician to be implemented fall semester of 2024. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Ron Houston? Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Valerie Gray. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote. The motion carries. Item 982. Calhoun Community College Associate in Applied Science and Airframe Technology. Is recommend Alabama Community College Assistant Board Trustees approve Calhoun Community College's application for an Associate in Applied Science Degree in Airframe Technology to be implemented fall semester of 2024. Do I have a motion? Tim McCartney, second. Valerie? Any discussion? Please signify by raising your hand or voice vote. The motion carries. Item 983. Calhoun Community College Associate in Applied Science in Aviation Power Plant Technology. Is recommend Alabama Community College Assistant Board of Trustees approve Calhoun Community College's application for an Associate in Applied Science Degree in Aviation Power Plant Technology to be implemented fall semester of 2024. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Levlin, second by Tim. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote. The motion passes unanimously. Item 9A4. Enterprise State Community College and Associate in Applied Science and Certificate in Automotive Technology. Is recommend Alabama Community College Assistant Board Trustees approve Enterprise State Community College's application for an Associate in Applied Science Degree in Automotive Technology to be implemented fall semester of 2024. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Mitchell? Second, Ron Houston. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving, raise your hand or voice vote. The motion passes. Item 9A5 is also Enterprise State Community College and Associate in Applied Science and Certificate in Welding. Is recommend Alabama Community College Assistant Board Trustees approve Enterprise State Community College's application for an Associate in Applied Science Degree and Certificate in Welding to be implemented fall semester of 2024. Do I have a motion? Mr. Mitchell? Is there a second? Ron Houston? Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote. The motion's unanimous. Next is item 9A6. Alabama Community College System Allocation of FY23-2024 Industry Certification Initiative Funds. It is recommend Alabama Community College Assistant Board Trustees authorize the allocation of a portion of the FY23-24 Industry Certification Initiative Funds as outlined below. It's a total of two hundred nine thousand four hundred dollars. And this is FY2023-24 Education Trust Fund Industry Certification Initiative Funds. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Houston? Second, Levlin. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote. Motion carries unanimously. Item 9A7 is Chattahoochee Valley Community College Adams Hall Renovation. Is recommend Alabama Community College Assistant Board Trustees authorize Chattahoochee Valley Community College to proceed with project named Adams Hall Renovation Interior Demolition Bid. Construction contracts for the demolition bid shall be executed no later than July 30, 2024, or this authorization shall expire. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Valerie? Second, Tim. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote. Motion carries unanimously. Item 9A8. Jefferson State Community College Exterior Improvements to Bethune-Duramas Hall and George Layton Building. Is recommend Alabama Community College Assistant Board Trustees approve Change Order Number Five, Curtain Wall for the project named Jefferson State Community College Exterior Improvements of Bethune-Duramas Hall and George Layton Building. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Ron?
Second, Levlin.
Any further discussion? All in favor of approving, signify by raising your hand or voice vote. Motion carries. Next is item 989. Southern Union State Community College Opelika Campus Ground Lease Agreement with Auburn University for the new aviation maintenance training hangar project. Is recommend Alabama Community College Assistant Board Trustees approve the Southern Union State Community College Opelika Campus ground lease agreement with Auburn University for the new aviation maintenance training hangar project. The lease agreement shall be executed no later than September 1, 2024, or this authorization shall expire. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Ms. Gray? Second? Tim? Any discussion? All in favor of approving, signify by raising your hand or voice vote. The motion carries. Next is item 9A10. Bishop State Community College Carver Campus and Southwest Campus Cares Act for COVID-related Capital Renewal. Recommendations. Is recommend Alabama Community College Assistant Board Trustees authorize Bishop State Community College to approve Change Order Number One for the project named Carver Campus and Southwest Campus Cares Act for COVID-related Capital Renewal.
So moved.
Have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Houston? Any further discussion? All in favor of approving, signify by raising your hand or voice vote. The motion carries. Next is item 9A11. Bishop State Community College Carver Campus Robertson Building Exterior Improvements. Is recommend Alabama Community College Assistant Board Trustees authorize Bishop State Community College to proceed with the work associated of the project named Carver Campus Robertson Building Exterior Improvements. The construction contracts shall be executed no later than July 31, 2024, or this authorization shall expire.
So moved.
Mr. Sheil has a motion on the floor, second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Houston? Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand or voice vote. Motion carries. Item 9A12. Bishop State Community College Main Campus Gymnasium Renovation. Is recommend Alabama Community College Assistant Board Trustees authorize Bishop State Community College to proceed with the project named Main Campus Gymnasium Renovation. Construction contracts for the project shall be executed no later than July 30, 2024, or this authorization shall expire. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Sheil? Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Rome? Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand or voice vote. All in favor, raise your hand or voice vote. Motion carries. Next is item A thirteen, Shelton State Community College Fred Campus Building Renovations. Is recommend the Alabama Community College System Board Trustees authorize Shelton State Community College to proceed with the roofing work for the project named Fred Campus Building Renovations. Construction contracts shall be executed no later than August first, twenty twenty-four, or this authorization shall expire. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Mr. Rome, you have a second?
Second.
Second, Ron Houston, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand or voice vote. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is item A fourteen, again at Shelton State Community College, the Martin and Fred Campuses Controls Equipment Replacement. Is recommend the Alabama Community College System Board Trustees authorize Shelton State Community College to proceed with the project named Martin and Fred Campuses Controls Equipment Replacement. Contracts for the project will be executed no later than September first, twenty twenty-four, or this authorization shall expire. Do I have a motion? Mr. Rome, is there a second? Mr. Mitchell, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand or voice vote. Motion carries. Next is item A fifteen, Trenton State Community College Patterson Campus Building G Rer roofing. Is recommend the Alabama Community College System Board Trustees authorize Trenton State Community College to proceed with the project named Patterson Campus Building G Rer roofing. Construction contracts shall be executed no later than August first, twenty twenty-four, or this authorization shall expire. Do I have a motion? Mr. Mitchell, second. Mr. Houston, any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand or voice vote. Motion carries. Next is item A sixteen, Bevel State Community College Approval of Shared Facility and Instructional Services and Programs Agreement. Is recommend the Alabama Community College System Board Trustees authorize the President of Bevel State Community College to enter into a shared facility and instructional services and programs agreement with Walker County Board of Education and Jasper City Board of Education. Do I have a motion? Levellin Rome with a motion, is there a second? Mr. Houston, any further discussion? All in favor of approving, raise your hand or voice vote. Next we have item A seventeen, Bevel State Community College Summerton Campus Building Eight Hundred Renovation for the welding program. Is recommend that the Alabama Community College System Board Trustees authorize Bevel State Community College to proceed with approval of change order number five for the project named Summerton Campus Building Eight Hundred Renovation for welding program. Do I have a motion? Mr. Houston, second. Tim McCartney, any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand or voice vote. The motion carries. Next we have item nine A eighteen, Wallace State Community College Hansville Campus Coliseum Seating Replacement. Is recommend that the Alabama Community College System Board Trustees authorize Wallace State Community College to proceed with the project named Hansville Campus Coliseum Seating Replacement Construction. Construction contracts for the project shall be executed no later than December first, twenty twenty-four, or this authorization shall expire. Do I have a motion? Mr. McCartney, is there a second? Ron Houston, any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand or voice vote. Item number ten, personnel. Nothing for personnel, okay. Item number eleven, Chancellor's Report.
Well, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Dr. Murphy, thank you to your, you and your team for the hospitality, the breakfast, every, everything last night. As, as was said earlier, the bar has been raised and we just always enjoy being able to do these board meetings on our college campuses. It's a really special experience for us who, who work in the system office to be able to be a part of that. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to give another enrollment update. Our summer enrollment is still looking really strong. We have, as of yesterday, forty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-one students registered for summer classes. That is four point six four percent ahead of last summer. We still have some time to enroll some new students, so, so for our, our college presidents and staff members, just continue to get out there and, and beat the bushes to get as many summer students for that second mini-term as we possibly can, but, but our credit hour production is looking very strong as well. We're currently four point four three percent ahead in credit hour production as opposed to summer last year. Not all of our colleges, so looking ahead to fall registration, we're still, we're still at a place where not all of our colleges have begun registering students for, for fall, and this was the same case last year, so we don't have great comparative data on registration. The best comparative data that we do have is, is applications. And, but what I can tell you is that over thirty thousand students have actually registered for fall classes already to this point, so this is a, this is a great start to fall enrollment. We are seeing some challenges in fall enrollment, not, not by way of enrollment yet, but certainly in some of the federal initiatives that are out there with FAFSA. There's a lot of chaos surrounding the FAFSA rollout and FAFSA simplification project, and, and that is something that we need to keep a close eye on and see how that may impact enrollment, but it, it's incumbent upon our colleges to make sure that the, the communication out with those students is just better than it has ever been, and I'm, I'm confident that our colleges are doing that. But as far as fall enrollment goes and applications, we remain a little over ten and a half percent ahead in applications for admission for fall year-to-date, with those key increases continuing to be in dual enrollment in first-time freshmen and in transfer students. So, again, some challenges out there, but, but the numbers that we have at our disposal right now continue to look good. On the workforce side and adult education side, this summer, and again, so students can enroll in these workforce and adult education programs throughout the year, they're not necessarily bound by the same restrictions of the semesters that our four-credit students are, but for this summer, two thousand nine hundred and fifty-seven students have registered for workforce and adult education programs. That's, since, let's see, since those students may be enrolled in actually more than one program or more than one course, the total number of registrations is actually over thirty-four hundred for this summer. Since the beginning of the school year, so looking back to August first, our, our non-credit enrollment workforce and edu, and adult education, those programs have enrolled a total of over thirty, of thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three students. It's a very, very large number, and that totals forty-one thousand, two hundred and two unique registrations. And so we talk a lot about the, talk a lot about four-credit enrollment, but these, these students are impacting their lives, and I love the, love the phrase that Dr. Murphy used earlier, they're changing, changing their lives for good forever, and I think I, I need to adopt that one, Dr. Murphy, that's a, a very good one. But, but you saw the stories that were highlighted earlier, and I talk a lot about numbers, and I love to remind myself as well as everyone else that it's not just numbers that we're talking about. Those, those numbers do tell wonderful stories, but the stories are not as, as impactful as those individual stories and individual families that are impacted by the education that our colleges offer, so those are, that's the enrollment update for today. I'll entertain any questions.
Thank you, Neil. That's always, always good, good information, we appreciate it, it's very positive, and like I say, changing lives and helping people, thank you, changing families. Any community reports? The date and location of the next meeting is the work session immediately following this one, and let's take five minutes, and we'll meet back here at ten minutes till eleven to start the work session, and is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
So move, Mr. Houston, second. Meeting is adjourned.
We're gonna go ahead and start with our work session, and before, before we move into, we're gonna change it up just a little bit right off the bat. David Walters, would, would you come to the podium, please? I don't even know if he knows this, but we won't, we'd, we'd like a quick update on, on Department of Corrections and what else is going on there, please, so it's a little different.
Good morning, and certainly I'm used to being called on unexpectedly, so, but I want to give you a quick update on some things that we're doing with the Alabama Department of Corrections that certainly we're all very, very excited about, and you may have seen the press release yesterday on this, but I had a conversation probably about four months ago with Commissioner Ham, Commissioner John Ham of the Department of Corrections, and certainly in the conversation, I asked John, I said, John, what's first and foremost, what are you always thinking about? What's keeping you up at night? And he said, David, safety and security of Alabamians, and certainly of the inmates that they are housing as well, so safety and security first and foremost. And I said, well, what does that mean, John? He said, well, I'll tell you, I need two thousand correctional officers, I'm short about two thousand correctional officers across state Alabama, we need more, and certainly right now, I, I need at least six hundred or so, and I said, well, how about if we create a pathway for you and get something going where we can get people into becoming a correctional officer? And I said, I'm gonna say something that certainly sounds maybe a little callous, but what does a correctional officer make? So if I asked you all in this room right now, what does a correctional officer make in state Alabama, what would you guess? Thirty thousand, thirty-two thousand, thirty-five thousand, something like that?
Fifty-seven.
Actually, they start off at fifty-four thousand a year, after twenty months, they can make seventy-two thousand a year, with overtime, which they all can get, they can make over a hundred thousand a year. And guys, that's a great pathway program. So quickly came back, we got a lot of staff together, Mark Bailey and others, and Ebony certainly from the marketing standpoint, we put this thing together, we're getting ready to roll it out, we're gonna do a pilot in three of our colleges, Reed State, Fred Boinkin, stand up, wave at everybody, there you go. Keith Brown, certainly very proud of Keith, and, and he's really helping us lead a lot of this, he's really guiding some of it with other colleges, we're providing some funds up there so he can get it to the other colleges, and certainly John Cole with Shelton State. So those are our three pilots, we're gonna start this the first of August. Corrections is very excited about it, actually, we've got some news media out here right now that's interviewing Mark Bailey and some others about the program, so very excited about that. Chancellor, that's a quick update, I could keep going, but stay tuned, it's gonna be something that we're gonna be sharing with, across all of our colleges throughout the state of Alabama.
Any questions? Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Now we'll move into our work session.
Chancellor Baker, Chairman Rogers, trustees, thank you so much, it's our pleasure. We're, we're appearing before you today to present a proposal for a new program at Bevel State Community College, so I'm proud to have with me today our Associate Dean of Career Tech Education, Ms. Maurice Ingle, and our Division Chair on the Hamilton Campus, and also our ELT instructor, Mr. Toby Taylor. So at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Toby, he's gonna come up and carry you through the presentation and all the particulars and details about the program proposal.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Toby Taylor, and I teach Electrical Systems Technology and Industrial Maintenance at Bevel State Community College. Also serve as Division Chair for Career Technical Education. I would like to thank the Chancellor, the Board of Trustees, and our administration for the opportunity to be able to present this new program before you today. The Facility Maintenance Technician Program at Bevel State will provide individuals with a with the vital knowledge and skills necessary to excel as maintenance technicians with multiple specialized skills. This all-encompassing program offers various specialized areas such as electrical, welding, machine tool, HVAC, and the main goal is to equip students for prosperous careers in facility maintenance by providing a broad, skilled educational plan. The need for such a program has arisen from our advisory committees. Our local manufacturers and facilities put a high value on multi-skilled craftsmen. In a smaller facility, maintenance personnel with an expanded skill set are extremely valued and needed as they typically don't have the capabilities of hiring specialists in each individual area. As a college, we feel like we are set up well to assist with this need due to already having established programs in all of these areas. Our infrastructure, in terms of faculty and facilities, is already in place with the existing programs. The only foreseeable expense would be an increase in the usage of materials and supplies. The FMT program appeals to a diverse group of students. If a student is in dual enrollment or just graduating high school and wants to go into a trade but isn't sure which one, the program would be a great introduction to get them acclimated. If that student wants to continue on and specialize in a specific area, they could obtain another AAS in that particular program because the general studies requirements are the same, and classes taken in that area of the FMT would count towards the program's specific AAS. In addition, currently enrolled students in programs such as electrical, machine tool, welding, and HVAC could earn the additional FMT AAS degree by taking only twelve more classes. We already work with industry partners to provide continued training of employees with companies such as Alabama Power, 3M, G&amp;G Steel, NTM Bauer, and more. This program would assist in partnerships like that by giving them a formalized training option as we have in several other of our programs. Once again, I would like to thank you for your time and consideration and opportunity to present this proposal, and at this time, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next is item two, Coastal Alabama Community College Bruton Campus Dormitory Furniture Purchase. Good morning.
This is Coastal Alabama's request that the Board of Trustees authorize the President of the College to expend $891,778.40 to purchase new furniture for the dormitory housing on the Bruton campus. The furniture that is currently in the dorms is the original furniture from the development of the dormitory in 1996. To be kind, it is well beyond its useful life. Dr. Milner has included a letter along with his request that is in the materials along with a description of the furniture to be purchased if this request is approved. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you.
The remaining items on the agenda are all facilities items and items.
Good morning, Board members.
Good morning.
This morning, we have for you a total of nine projects to present and share with you. The first one takes us to Central Alabama Community College, specifically to the Childersburg Campus for a re-roofing effort and project up there involving buildings B, D, and E. We've highlighted in your packet there the buildings that are identified for the re-roofing program and efforts that are needed on that campus. We also included in your packet, Board members, some of the financials that we anticipate going forward for the work. We do have a little bit of some architectural assistance involved with this to take care of some of the bidding and so forth and the specifications. Board members, any questions about this project? We do expect that we'll receive bids towards the end of May, June? We're in June, and we'll bring those results back to you in the July Board Meeting. Any questions about the re-roofing effort at Childersburg Campus? The next one, Board members, takes us also to Central Alabama. We've just come a little bit further south down to Alexander City. Specifically at this campus, Board members, we're looking to begin efforts to modernize the building that is known as the Health and Arts Facility on the campus. Specifically, this phase is targeting the theater portion of that building to be renovated. We did include in your packet there a highlight that shows the portion of the building in red that is identified in this first space for modernization and renovation activities. Architect for this, Board members, is McKean Associates. We do expect to receive bids for demolition later on in the month of June and bring those results back to you in July, and then we'll complete the design work so forth for the entire renovation and fit out of the space. Those results will come back to us for the Board to take action in the third quarter of this year. Board members, any questions about this project for renovating the Health and Arts Facility specifically pertaining to the theater portion of the building? The next project takes us to Ingram State. This is something that our college president there will be thrilled to see happening, where we're moving forward with some improvements at that campus, specifically the creation of a workforce training facility. The first step in this is the ground lease that will allow us to move forward with the work and the fit out of this facility that's going to go in there for training. We've highlighted in here a couple of slides for you showing you in relation to the existing Perry County facility where this new workforce center would go. And then we've included in there a site plan, a little bit to show the building and a roadway that would come in and provide access to the center. It's built in such a way, Board members, that it is a Butler-style-type building. It is open-air. We do have a portion that is closed off for forklift training and then also a room or a building in there with a couple of classrooms to provide instruction. In this covered building, we'll be able to allow workers and students to come together where they can be trained in the use of a skid steer, a backhoe, and other types of heavy equipment. So, as those students in this facility leave, they can go out into the workforce and find gainful employment doing these types of skills. Board members, the lease itself is for about 2.79 acres, and we're working to confirm that and finalize that with pardons and paroles. It is going to be for a 99-year lease term, and each year of the term, our lease and rental for the lease itself is $1 per year. Any questions about the ground lease agreement with the Alabama Bureau of Pardons and Paroles for the Workforce Training Center at Perry County? The next project, Board members, takes us out to Marion Military Institute. We have two projects. The first one is with Loveless Hall. This is simply a renovation of the building that is highlighted in your packet, Building 18. This is an effort to start going through this facility, modernizing it, and making that investment to repurpose and bring that facility forward into the 21st century. We also have another project, Board members, that also involves Rain Hall. And this one here, we've identified in your packet where that building is located. In a similar situation there, these are facilities that are going on 50, 60 years of age and have the opportunity before us to modernize and renovate those buildings. In both instances, we're looking to move work forward here into the third quarter and expect that this will be work activity that'll take us anywhere from the next year to a year and a half to complete those improvements. Board members, any questions about the work at Loveless and at Rain Hall from Marion Military The next project takes us to Shelton State, specifically to the Fred Campus where we're doing some utility, electrical utility, infrastructure improvements. We've identified in here, in this one particular slide, that the improvements are to take the overall aerial transmission power lines and put them underground, and then also to transfer the ownership of the utilities over to the utility company for the maintenance and upkeep of that utility system as a primary supplier to the campus. We've built into this program two different aspects. There is part of this work in this engineering drawing here that will involve the local utility company, which is Alabama Power. There's work in this project that only they can do. The other portions of the work that they do not or are not required to perform will be treated as a separate project and bid package that our engineering team, as we contract with the engineers, will develop for the college to be able to put this work out to bid. We did include in your packet, Board members, the financial breakdown that shows how this project will move forward. In total, we looked at this work starting in July with the work that we have that is unregulated that'll go out to bid, and then the regulated portions, we are currently designing that Alabama Power will perform as we get into the third, later in the third quarter of this year. Any questions about the Fred Campus Utility, Electrical Utility Infrastructure Improvements? The next project takes us up to Beville State, specifically to the Jasper Campus and the addition of the Energy Services Infrastructure Training Center. We've had a lot of talk and discussion about that. This is brought back to you, Board members, to give you an update on the schedule and how this project is proceeding. We included in your packet a series of slides that have been made available previously and a little bit of the development in the fit out of this addition for the technologies such as electric vehicles, solar, and these types of programs that are pressing right now here in the state. As we look at this project, we've broken it down into three different packages. We expect to receive bids for the first bid package, which will be for the site work that'll come to us later on this month. The second phase is broken down into a material order, but then also the package for the building and the foundation work itself to bring that building out of the ground. That will happen later in the summer. We'll bring that back for Board action sometime in August. And then, Board members, we're looking to move into the fit out, which is the interior finish of the space, and we'll expect to have bids received back in November so that we can take action at that point. This is an aggressive schedule, and it is contingent on the supply chain, but at this point, the engineering and design team feel optimistic that we can move this project along, that we do not have any supply chain issues, and bring this product online in this building for use in the second quarter of next year as early as April 2025. We included in your packet financial information, and are there any questions about this Energy Infrastructure Training Center project for Beville State? The last project, Board members, not the last two, take us up to Wallace. The first one at the Hansville Campus there is the New Automotive Technology Building. And this project, Board members, is centered in an area on the campus where we have some old buildings that will be demolished. We've identified six of them, and in this location here, this is where the location highlighted in the slide where this automotive center is currently identified to go. This will be a nice welcome addition and helps the college meet the needs of the auto industry in that area, specifically plays an emphasis on electric vehicles and the training associated with that technology. We've included in here floor plans that show a little bit of the creation of the space where there are bays in here for the vehicles to be serviced, and then also room for providing classroom instruction. Board members, we expect to take bids for the construction of this project in October, but as this project moves forward with the early demolition of the buildings, that work is going to commence in the next project that I'll share with you here in a moment related to the STEM Gateway Building. But for right now, this project is impacted by the site work that's going to be moving forward here in the coming weeks ahead. Any questions about the New Automotive Technology Building for the Hansville Campus at Wallace State Community College? And to tie it all together, we move into the STEM Gateway Building that is also going up there at Hansville. And again, this particular building sits to the top of this slide above where you saw earlier the automotive building. And in this particular project, we are moving this project forward in several different ways. We've got the site package that we just broke that out a little differently where we'll see demolition that will be moving forward here as a bid later on this month, and then we'll come behind with the site packages. We did a little bit of a pivot on this since we last reported to you in that when we were taking bids for the site work, we combined the demolition into that. We only had two contractors that showed up at the pre-bid meeting. We were somewhat disappointed with that participation, so what we've done, the demolition is an item where we feel confident that there are several dozen contractors that want to participate. So, we'll break that out, get them involved, and give ourselves a little bit more time to go out and generate interest for the civil work in the package. So, demolition is moving forward, and we just carved it up a couple of different ways in terms of the site package. Demo will happen first, the civil work will come behind it, and then we're moving into the schedule that you see here where we have mechanical and electrical major equipment items that will be released later on in the fall. The supply chain is still an issue and concern for us, and we've had some recent events with these workforce centers that we have been experiencing where some of the electrical equipment that we ordered a year ago is still delayed, and we're finding ways to work around that to accelerate it. But the industry in general is still struggling to deal with supply chain issues. So, we're going to get ahead of this with this new project, and then as we go into the latter part, or excuse me, the first quarter of next year, this particular project and its construction will be put out to bid, and we hope to have those bids back to us in a February-March timeframe. Board members, any questions about the STEM Gateway Building and the improvements there at the Hansville Campus for Wallace State? Board members, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Next item is not on the agenda, but at 1:30, we have a ribbon cutting, and if there's no more business to come forward this, Board, we adjourn. Thank you.